Camera, somebody take pictures.
I am Emily Hires Vanaman.
I am Emily Hires Vanaman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I would discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of auditor.
Of auditor.
In Lower Gwinnett Township.
In Lower Gwinnett Township.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Your excuse.
Thank you Judge Leonard.
Thank you.
I'm gonna wish thank you for coming and thank you also Emily, congratulations. We know you'll do a wonderful job. And we appreciate it all of lower Gwinnett does. You don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Your excuse. Thank you.
I'm gonna open it up to public comments. These are citizen comments, concerns or questions for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to general business. Um, we're gonna have a discussion or a conversation regarding the upcoming bid for residential trash and recycling collection included in our board packet was a memo. Um, it was from our assistant township manager kind of outlining that our current contract with Republic Service expires on Halloween of this year. Um, they're preparing to go out to bid for waste haulers um in June. And kind of outlining some of the key components of our existing contract, which is we have twice a week pickup, recycling services once a week. There is an option for low volume as well as bulk. There is leaf and yard waste. And the contract terms, which could be three years with a two-year extension if agreeable by both parties. I think we wanna kinda have a conversation around if all of these options are still the options we wish to pursue. Um, and if there were any conversation around other feedback, whether it be any change to the existing options that we currently have.
I, I did have a question about the feedback and maybe this is for you Jamie from residents um about only needing pickup once a week. I don't know if it's just like little kids, but that would be difficult for my family, but if that's what most municipalities are doing or there's, you know, what the residents wanna do. I'm happy to, to hear about it, but that was, that jumped out at me just cuz I know
Yeah.
my house, that would be tricky.
Um, that is probably one of the most popular um feedback items we get. Um, and that's basically coming from people who are looking for a lower cost option and they don't generate um that much trash. So they think if they went to a one, once a week collection, that would be considered more of the low volume option than what the option is in the contract. Um, but the hauler won't arrange for just once a week pickup. Like that isn't the option right now.
Okay.
Um, but the suggestion from um the haulers is that, you know, that we should anticipate that the prices are gonna increase and probably significantly. Um, and that one of the, like a cost-saving measure could be reducing it to once a week um pickup.
Okay. Uh, yeah, and if it's a substantial difference, I think that may outweigh my concern, but.
Yeah, I have a, along the same lines as Janine, I had a question about that. If it's just once a week, is there gonna be, is that, you know, like an unlimited number of bags you can set out or is it restricted to just, you know, your one dumpster?
Um, I think it would be just, I mean, they provide you the, the one um trash toter and then the recyclable. Um, I think you would have to probably pay for an additional um receptacle.
I have two and you don't have to pay anymore. It just all has to be in the tote.
In the tote, okay.
Nothing.
Not the tote, but in a regular old trash can that I have, they take it.
Well, they take it, but they're not gonna put it in the contract.
Right, right.
Yeah, but they, they take it. We don't have the kids in the house anymore.
Yeah.
We could probably go to one day a week, but I would say I remember what it was like. We would've struggled for one day a week with the kids in there.
I think if you have a larger family, it would be a struggle.
Yeah, we have had, I mean, people have called us and um I, I specifically remember this woman wanted additional, she wanted more than two receptacles. She wanted um, and she, she did have a, they, like it was a challenge at first, but then they worked with her and they did let her pay, purchase, like pay for additional.
Yeah, I think it, and I don't know how it works in the bidding process, but if, you know, that, that was just a concern that I had. If there is flexibility, it's not really the, the amount of times that they come, it's just more the amount of trash. So if I'm not, if we're not able to get rid of all of our trash every week. Um, that, that would be.
One thing we could do in the bid is, is essentially go to bid for both options.
The one and the alternative so that we get, you could really see what the cost difference would be if once, once per week.
And we can make sure there's language that's clear of certainly at least two toters or, I don't know, you know, we have to work through the details of the bid.
Is there, is there an option for senior citizens though? Is there an option for someone to opt out and have a, like a lower volume of trash pickup?
Um, well, right now the low volume is basically a flat rate and they are doing like a bag service, um, which people don't like cuz it gets missed. Um, and the hauler doesn't like it either because they want it in a toter so they can use the arm, the trucks with the arm. Um, so one of the suggestions was rather than do the low volume, maybe see if there's a way to put into the specifications that there just be like a senior citizen discount that's not based on, that doesn't change the terms of the contract. It just offers this discount to people that are of a certain age.
But not even limited to just senior citizens? Any, any.
Maybe like just like a, right, like a.
Person versus a family.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be difficult to manage. A driver would have to know which house only gets one pickup and which.
Yeah, yeah. And that's kind of why they haven't gone that route with just the low volume, just being once a week cuz they're like, they're gonna.
Can we see what it would be for, I mean, you might've mentioned this maybe the way it is now, once a week and then once a week with two totes? So you'd have two regular trash bags, trash cans and the one recycled?
Once a week with unlimited totes.
All the totes.
We, we can do all, yeah, we can definitely do all of that. I mean, I, I've seen it because prices have been going up for a decade now. Like there's just been significant increases in trash recycling. You can have honestly as many options as you want. Obviously the, you know, we don't wanna get too weird. We want them to be able to respond to it cuz we wanna get people to respond. But they're gonna understand why. They know that it's, everyone's concerned about costs and
Yeah.
we can do that.
And we can weigh that, like the, the benefit. I mean, if we see how much more expensive it will be to have twice a week, then that counts as in favor of once a week and
Yep.
a middle of the road option, maybe with two totes or whatever.
And I, I think the variations can be helpful. I mean, this is our opportunity to get more information about at least what it's costing now. Is it, once they're out there, they don't really care if it's one tote or two tote or unlimited totes versus the twice a week, or maybe it does matter. You know, we can test that by having different options.
But, but so whatever we lock in though, that's applies across township, right? Is there any option for people to opt out of the trash carrier?
I think you wouldn't want, so the whole idea of why they're bidding on it is cuz we're guaranteeing them that much business. So if people can opt out, um, I mean, I guess if you wanted to offer that to people, we would just have a smaller bulk that we'd be offering. You don't have to collect people's trash recycling. You could also just stop doing it and let people get their own hauler. That's absolutely the way to have people tailor. The benefit of that is you, people can pay for the service that they want. Once a week, you know, they, any of that, or they, you know, they take it someplace themselves. But that's us, it's a lot more wear and tear. More than likely for most people, we're gonna get a better price going out to bid for thousands of homes than they are just for themselves. Plus you potentially have a whole bunch of trash trucks.
Different age.
Going off the, all of that. So there's, there's definite downsides to that.
I, I know when I first moved in my neighborhood, not everybody used the township carrier. I mean, they, some people had a different trash company. And I'm not advocating for that because I like the idea of um a discount across the township. Um, but it's just that once the township locks it in, that's what we're bound to. Okay.
Yeah, cuz you have to go out to bid. So you have to take the low bid or you don't have to take it, but if you're gonna, you know, accept the low bid and, and not go out to bid again, then we are locked in and you can't negotiate.
We usually do three years.
That's something we're gonna have to think about too, of how many years to go for. And we'll have to just do a little bit of investigating. See if it's, you know, if there's so much uncertainty out there, they might really jack it up the last couple, you know, year two and year three to protect themselves. But it's, we need a crystal ball. But we, you know, but we can, that's where right now we can set up a lot of different alternatives to try to, again, we don't wanna be ridiculous. We don't wanna make this bid too much of a pain to submit for. Um, but you know, we can try to test out some different options to get the information. We need to make the best guess.
Additional questions from the board? Any additional questions from the public? Did we give you enough information for you to go back and write the bid specifications or do you want a little bit more clarity?
Um, no, I think that's, I mean, that's really the, the main contract item that, um, I mean, the rest of the things in it are pretty um standard and then there's requirements that we have to meet under Act 101. So like, there's definitely, um, this is really what we can alter, basically.
Okay, so we'll expect to hear back from you guys in May.
Yep.
In the cloud.
Okay.
And we could, you'll see the bid. I mean, we can, so that way too, maybe as you read it again, if you, until we actually advertise, we'll be asking you for authorization to advertise. So we'll show you the bid then. So maybe as you read it, you may think of other things too. Um, and, and we could always change it that night.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Norristown Road tree planning proposal. Fred, do you, we have a memo from you. You wanna give us a little bit of an update?
Sure, um, we were contacted by some of the residents there um about the uh thinning of the buffer between Norristown Road and their homes was noticeable after the road was widened. It wasn't solely because the road was widened. Pico put in new poles along the whole length and they trimmed trees. We had trimmed the trees on our trail side because they were hanging down over the trail. So all that combination in addition to the underbrush being cleared when the road was widened. Uh, it did cut the buffer between the homes and Norristown Road. So sight and sound is thinner. So we had um Corbo Landscaping come out, their Co-Stars provider, they, they uh have Co-Stars contracts for this kinda work. Came out, gave us a price. We worked with the, the one neighbor in particular and uh got some trees that were acceptable to everyone that Corbo thought would grow in that area. It's a little difficult because the pine trees are still there and they are shading where we're gonna plant trees. So it had to be something that would grow in that area. And then uh we got the price twenty eight thousand eight hundred to plant trees to fill in the gaps in the buffer between the, the road and the houses. It, it'll really clean up the area too along our trail and make it look a lot nicer as well. It's kinda shabby looking, not shabby cuz we don't clean it up. The, the brush and trees that are there are kinda shabby looking. So this'll really make an improvement there.
I, and I'm just driving by, didn't notice the gaps. We're talking about um nine arborvadi's that are they're big ones. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Twenty-three prig. I don't know how to pronounce it. How do you pronounce it? Viburnum?
Yeah.
Viburnum.
Vibram?
Viburnum.
Viburnum.
Viburnum, I see. Okay. They're five to six feet tall um that are gonna be along the walking path. I guess that showed on the map. And then nine arborvadi's, they're about ten to twelve. So these are mature trees.
Yes, they're, that, so they, instead of waiting for them to grow and fill in, they're already a good size, so they would fill in that gap faster.
Okay, so you're gonna remove the dead spruce and mulberry and remove the honeysuckle to the totality of the project would be, and add mulch and all that good stuff. Twenty-eight eight?
Fred, you know what I'm gonna ask you?
Natives.
Yes, so I can tell you what can be planted there. I'm not gonna say because you're matching up a tree line that's already there. I'm not gonna say you have, that I'm insistent, but there are trees that are natives that will provide habitat and um food for birds and other wildlife that can replace that particular viburnum and also the arborvadi. The arborvadi, you may be aware of this, deer eat it.
Eat it, yes.
Yeah, so um it's not necessarily the best choice. The reason Corbo has these is because they're inexpensive to produce and they.
They're readily available.
Readily available. So um I would just ask Corbo, you know, what, what natives do you have?
Sure, and if you wanna provide me with some suggestions, I can make a quick call to see what's available. But um I don't know if you would wanna make it pending. I think we're looking to get these planted because of the time of the year, so.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. That's why I'm not, you know, being very, uh, really insistent, but um, so the viburnum, there are several native viburnums that could take the place of that one. Um, there's other like uh evergreen hollies that can take the place of the uh um arborvadi. But if you need to get them planted right away, you know, I'd ask that you do a quick check and just see if there can be other substitutes.
Really build in a little cost buffer or something, authorize up to a certain point or doesn't have to be this particular?
Do we budget? I know that this project we budgeted for a certain amount and are we within that budgeted amount or are we exceeding it?
So we, we didn't budget for this year for this project, thinking it was all gonna be done, but we did, the overall project was about fifty thousand dollars.
Less.
Less than the project. So as far as at least what we, cuz this is coming out of capital reserve. So what we were anticipating that we were gonna spend, there is a little bit of, of cushion in there.
Okay. I mean, I don't know the flex, I don't know the cost of, I, I know that arborvadi, I know that all of them are expensive. But I don't know if there is any additional cost specifically if it's natives. I don't know if you know Tessie.
Well, Green Giant is like everybody plants it, so nurseries always carry it. It's easy to um propagate, so
Yeah.
it's not native to Pennsylvania, but I mean, I'm not gonna say it's not a nice tree. I have two in my yard, but if we as a township have made a decision, which uh we have, about being a tree city, I think we should try um to, to identify natives.
Understanding though that the fence line and, and wanting it to be like a natural like fence essentially, or like, are you comfortable with the arborvadi's and if the viburnium, I'm not gonna say it right, if they try to like maybe look to insert natives and, and, you know, for that one specifically, is that acceptable?
It, yes, I think so. The, the um, the cultivar of viburnum that is listed is, it's, it's a good tree. It's, I mean, shrub, it's sturdy, but the natives have well, there's two reasons to grow natives. One is to provide caterpillars for young birds and the other is to provide fruit for fruit eating birds. And so the natives like the cranberry viburnum would have both of those. Uh, arrowwood viburnum is another one. Black haw is another one. Um, there are, there are many choices besides that particular one.
Okay.
So if, if we were stuck with the arborvadi's as they stand and then maybe look at a different
Sure.
alternative to viburnum, and then we give you up to, I, I, the only thing is we don't know what the
Right.
scale of, of what that could cost would be.
Yeah, it would be a cost and availability of.
Yeah.
Uh, these, these weren't the original choices, let's say, but after doing some more research and checking availability, this was came back with, he originally uh had skipped laurel along the one side, which was more of a hedge than a tree.
Mm-hmm.
But then he didn't think that was gonna work out as, as well as this would. So I, I can look at other things. That's certainly not a problem.
Okay, so I guess my concern is really in order for you to move forward, um that's what I was gonna say, twenty-eight. Yeah.
Yeah, like it doesn't have to be.
Do we have home?
Built in at the moment.
Yeah.
Planting.
Do we have homeowners that are really upset right now that want to get this done or are?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so then
Yes.
then you need to see what's available, but.
Yes, and, and they're concerned about the, also the aesthetics of it. So we've been working with
Right.
the trees and plants we're looking at. So I would do the same. We looked at the natives, I would send them the list.
Okay.
See.
You'd be comfortable with up to thirty thousand dollars? Do you think that's reasonable?
I think so.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or concerns from the board? Mr. Stein.
The proposal didn't say anything about a warranty. Is that included?
I believe the tree.
Something dies.
Yeah, the trees are, are warranted from the nursery. I don't know what the date was, I think for a year.
It's generally a year.
Before we agree to it to, to make sure of that.
Any additional questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? So we have in front of us the consideration of the um proposal from Corbo Landscaping. In the memo, it's, it's identified as twenty-eight eight to plant uh trees on township property along Norristown Road. I'd like to make a motion to um authorize a proposal for Corbo Landscaping Incorporated for up to thirty thousand to plant trees on township property along Norristown Road. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Fred. Uh, I think you should remain standing though. Next up is our conversation around the third-party um contract for mowing and hiring summer help. Um, for all our mowing and needs. Do you wanna give us a little bit of an overview?
Sure, as you remember, we our former landscaping contractor did not wanna continue the contract for the two-year option. So we were kinda left hanging. We had contacted Corbo from before, uh, they do landscaping on Co-Stars pre-bid. It's already a set price. Their price was ridiculously high, like three hundred thousand for one year for mowing.
Hmm.
So we put it out for bid. We changed the scope as, as you can see, we removed some things that we thought we'd be better off with us handling internally and to try to keep the cost down. Um, so we removed Redstone Lane, the Ingersoll Baseball Fields, the Lily Fields and the McCormick property around that, uh, North and South Surrey Lane Circles, North and South Bright's Basin. The Ingersoll House obviously is sold, so that didn't need to be on there. Uh, nine seventeen where our other public works building is, uh, we can take care of cutting the grass there. So we got three bids back on pen bid. Um, much more reasonable. It's actually less than what we paid Brightview last year. It's le- less too because we cut stuff out. Um, but seeing that and knowing that we have some extra work, I, I would recommend that we take the lowest bid for the properties that we put out the bid and hire um one person at least to uh help supplement. You know, a part-time seasonal person more or less. Uh, we did interview several people who would like to work as seasonal employees. Uh, a few of them were okay with working less than forty hours a week. That, that actually would be perfect for them. Couple retired people. One of our former Rich Miles was one of them. He, he would like to work, you know, six hours a day, three days a week. But so, that would help us. I think it still keeps us in the ballpark on the cost. And um I think it'll work out well. That's the way we wanna go.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So um, do you know AJR Environmental? You're familiar with that, right?
We checked a few of their references.
I'm very familiar with them.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've done a lot of personal work.
Yes.
All right.
West the solicitor tells us different, they, everything checked out.
They do not just work.
Yeah, every, yeah.
Good. Um, and so I'm not a math guy, but it looks like they average out at seventy-seven, eighty-two, which is about a nine thousand dollar delta from the, from the um Brightview. So do we think that Rich, we would pay Rich nine thousand dollars for the summer or more?
I mean.
More in that range?
Uh, I can in talking to Rich, we can stop if we wanna cap it at nine thousand. We'll just stop him from working.
I wanna make, we just get everything loaded.
Yeah.
To me, I'm not, I just wanna try to get a sense of if we're gonna be over budget, under budget or.
So and this is from Rich. He's fully retired. He's on social security. He already made money from his job in Florida. He can't make over twenty-two thousand for the year. He's already made about ten thousand, so whether we want him to work or not, at about twelve thousand, he's done. Like he, he can't work. So it seemed to work out that way, but if you would like to cap it at nine to keep it at a set budget number, he would be okay with that. I'm sure we would find work for him up to the twelve thousand or so for the year, so.
It, would it be beneficial in any way to reduce? If we reduce the scope anymore, would that lower the bid or would we have to get new bids? Meaning if there was like additional college-age students that wanted to come forward and, and put an application in?
We didn't bid it as, as any options, so I think we would have to re-bid it.
Is it?
The front of the solicitor on that, but I think that.
Is the bid for all of the things excluding this?
The bid is for all of the things in the old contract, and I guess I should've listed.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
E- everything, yeah, excluding those things. There's still other grass that we mow that was never
Part of it.
Part of the contract. All the sewer right-of-ways we cut, they've never been in the contract. There's other basins that we cut. There's some other small properties here and there that we've just always mowed, so there, there is other work already for for grass cutting.
Okay. I mean, I think that.
Not just for mowing, but for you're asking me, not just for mowing, but for other projects?
Like general, we tried to hire summer help before. We didn't have a good response. We had a much better response this year.
Hmm.
I, I have plenty of work to do. I could send a crew out on trails every day in the summer and and fill in washouts and stone and help with roadwork and cook rate. Like, there's plenty of work to, to do.
Okay.
We didn't really calculate on that and there's nothing budgeted, so if you're asking me if I would accept summer help and we have work for them, absolutely. But there isn't money that we set up for that this year. And part of that is not because I wouldn't want it, it's, we just didn't have any success finding anybody before. Yeah, we actually had several people that applied that were good.
Do you think the interest in summer help this year is because it's like specific to mowing verse?
Well, we've removed some of the language that sounded bad on our old seasonal help. Plus we raised yeah, collecting trash in the parks didn't sound good on the summer help. Plus we raised the, the rate we put in the advertisement. I mean, we were I think like seventeen dollars an hour and we raised twenty-one to twenty-five dollars an hour, which is it's a lot, but it's also in line with what other places are paying for summer help now, so.
So can we, procedurally, can we approve? Just so there's certainty with the mowing, can we approve AJR to do the mowing? And then approve Rich at a cap of nine thousand dollars? And then decide, look, at the next meeting, can we also budget for summer help? For some younger? Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure Fred has certainty going into the mowing season and can sort of move forward with that issue.
Yes, if you approve the mowing, I'm contacting. Yes, if you approve the mowing, I'm contacting them tomorrow to get started because. With the rent, yeah, it needs to.
Yeah, and, and locking it in at this rate for the next three years is probably really good.
Yeah, I, I think we're doing well with that.
Better, it's better than Brightview.
Right, and we contracted with them years ago, so. Okay.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Do you have any additional comments, Fred?
No, no, thank.
Any additional questions or comments from the public?
So I, I just have one small teeny comment. So the. The pieces of property that you took off the list. Those are going to be, the intent is that this, the part-time person is going to mow those?
Yes, supplemented with our full-time.
With your full-time staff?
When needed, yes.
Okay.
And we're still considering looking at those properties for other options too. But for now, we're ca- we're counting on mowing.
Okay.
Until we change the plan.
Yeah, I just, I don't want Surrey Drive North to get lost in the shuffle.
No. No, it, it, when we looked at the contract, it just didn't make sense to send a contractor cutting the big part. Up to cut those two little circles.
I agree with the ones you cut out. I think that makes sense. They're li- just little bits and pieces here and there, so it makes sense.
Yes. I think we were overpaying for the smaller pieces just because you have to load all the stuff on the truck and drive it up there. And if you have a five or six-man crew, it's only a one-person job at that site, but you're paying for the five or six guys who are already here, so. It seemed to make sense to take those out.
Okay, Fred, so I'd like to make a motion to approve. The AJR Environmental, thus far as it relates to. Mowing contract and the amount of two thirty-three, six forty-eight, eighty-five for the next three years. Um, as well as authorizing the, the hiring of one part-time seasonal employee for Public Works in two thousand and twenty-five. Let's make that motion. Is there?
Exceed nine thousand dollars?
I mean, do we want to be that specific? You want us to be that specific not to exceed nine thousand dollars? Is that needed, Mimi?
Could we, could we wait on that point until the next meeting? Because.
Once we know about the other people.
Sort out whether we need more help and.
Yeah, I would agree to leave it open for right now.
Okay. You want me to say it again? We're in the bid of a three-year mowing contract to AJR Environmental for two thirty-three, six forty-eight, eighty-five. And authorizing the hiring of one part-time seasonal employee for Public Works in two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Fred.
Thanks for all your work on this, Fred.
Yes. Um, next up is the consideration to waive the requirement. Um, for section six twelve oh one of the Township Code to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol at the two twenty-five, the two thousand and twenty-five. Oh, did I? Oh.
You were just so excited.
Oh, yeah, I was. I'm sorry. Considering the authorization of the advertisement of an ordinance revising the collection method for delinquent real estate taxes included in our board packet was a. A memo from the Township Manager as well as the Finance Director. Um, and it kind of outlines the fact that as of right now, Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau. Um, contacted us to let us know that there could be a hybrid method that we could utilize in collecting real estate taxes. It essentially would co- combine the elements of both the real estate tax law and municipal claims and tax lien. So this would allow us as a municipality to receive a hundred percent of the delinquent amount owed to us. As opposed to what we're currently getting, which is ninety-five percent of the current, like as the current method allows. Um, so we'd use the real estate tax sale law and the Municipal Claims and Tax Lien Act. The Tax Claim Bureau would collect a hundred and five percent of the delinquent taxes owed for the property owner. This would essentially allow us to ensure that we got a hundred percent of the taxes. Um, that were owed to us and the Tax Claim Bureau to receive a five percent commission. You also want to emphasize that this also gives us the opportunity. Um, to ensure that we reach out to our residents prior to this going into delinquency to ensure that they could or would potentially. Enter into any kind of payment option that would alleviate them paying in excess of a hundred percent. Isn't that accurate, Melinda?
Yeah, so in other words, before, we would pay the five percent for them to file all the liens, whatever, and now we're pushing it onto the delinquent taxpayer. But, um, Mimi and I discussed it. She came in and I asked Natalie how many times she sends out bills, like it's just once. And, and she doesn't. She sends it out three times. So she sends out the real estate tax bill. When they're past the discount period, she sends out another one. And then when, when they're late, she sends out one. But then she doesn't really have anything. It, it then automatically goes in to, to, to the liens. But to, to the tax claim department, what they do is they will work with you. So in other words, if you haven't been habitually doing this. And if you, um, um, meet the requirements, you can do a hardship kind of agreement. Um, I didn't go into the particulars of what that is. I would think that that varies depending upon your situation. Um, and they also will go into payment plans with people. And the house will only, like, you have two years before it's sort of the drop dead. And they will work with people, um, if they come in and they talk to them about it. So there are some alternatives to that. And then obviously, if they don't pay at all or they don't fill out any of the agreements, then it would go to tax lien and sheriff sale. But they will work with you. But it's not Natalie's spot. It's the one-up.
Gotcha, okay.
It doesn't mean that, that we're going to require them to pay more than they are paying now. In, in terms of the fines and the late fees and so forth.
Yes, in other words, before, we were eating the cost of them trying to file the liens and try to get the real estate taxes. So now what they're saying is because of the way the laws are, we're basically saying, okay, you're delinquent and you're not paying. And we have to do all of this other work to try to, to get you to pay. So now the taxpayer's paying that extra five percent.
So is there the flexibility, though, for us to work with our homeowners in a township prior to going to the Tax Claim Bureau? Because as soon as it goes, you're, you're paying the extra regardless of the hardship.
Based on the information I have now, no.
No.
Statutorily, the tax collector can cut.
Not cut deals, but allow payment plan, no?
No, but.
Statutorily, they can.
Okay.
When it goes to the, to Montgomery County, then they can. Yes.
But you're always still going to be paying more than a hundred percent of what you would owe.
Um, yes, if, yes, if we do this method with the five percent. Now. When, we had a meeting with them and it was very informative and they sort of went through this. There are people who habitually. Don't pay until they're forced to pay or would go to sheriff's sale. So we're hoping that this might help some of that. And we don't have a huge amount. Um, and they are willing to work with anyone who comes in, say if they lost their job or something like that and say, you know, I can't do this. Can I get onto a payment plan or whatever? Um, and he said they, they do do that.
Yeah, the habitual nature of not paying your taxes, though, is because you don't have the money.
Um, no, you know, yeah.
I didn't know that you could just not pay and then only pay ninety-five percent of it. I didn't know that.
Well, no, no, no. So in other words.
Have to pay a hundred.
We're all getting ninety-five percent. They were, they.
Okay.
We had to pay Montgomery County for the tax liens and everything five. Now what we're saying is if they are delinquent, we should still be getting. The other taxpayers don't eat the cost.
Well, what's bothering me with this is that there's now an increased cost to that person. I'm like Danielle, I, I'm not comfortable, uh, if somebody's not paying their tax bill that they're. They're going to be assessed for five percent more.
Well, if they go on a payment plan and they stick with the payment plan, they're fine.
But the payment plan is not with our tax collectors, with Tax Claim Bureau. You still will be paying more. Regardless, once you start to engage with them, you're paying more than a hundred percent of what your taxes that you owe for your property. That's what I'm saying.
Because you're not paying your taxes.
And I was just going to say, for the individuals that I have encountered, they, it's not because they, they're deciding like this isn't a bill that I'm going to pay attention to. It's they don't have the money to pay it in totality.
That it's an interest-free loan.
Right.
That's what you want to give, an interest-free loan.
I'm not negating any of that. What I'm saying is it's, it's not because of just.
It's a penalty for not paying your taxes on time. And, and it's a penalty because liens and other things. And those costs go to that so that they can collect what's due.
Hmm, but otherwise, we eat those costs.
Correct.
Well, that's. Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Do we know how much annually we?
Well, he, he, they did bring up, um, that worksheet. I don't have that with me. But it wasn't, there wasn't a lot of people and there was a, there was a group of the habituels. That just never pay until it's broken to sheriff's sale.
Do we know what the, like, how many that is in our township, our municipality?
Currently. Oh, yeah, Natalie.
Natalie, do you want to, do you have something to share?
Can you hear us? Yeah, yeah, I just, I wanted to say.
Can you talk?
Can you hear me?
Maybe it's an accident.
Can you hear us, Natalie?
I can hear, yeah, but I can't.
We can't hear you.
Okay, I don't know how to do it. I mean, I can hear you. I just can't speak.
Okay, you gave us a thumbs up.
Okay, can you hear me now?
No, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Is it in the chat?
Oh, God.
Speak loud. Let me yell at home.
Okay.
Is it us?
No, it's her. It's probably her.
Uh, my volume is up.
You want to call my phone and I'll put it up to the speaker.
Alright. I'll call to you.
Can you unmute?
It may be the same issue I had calling in the other day. There's, there was something on this.
I mean, I got myself a few. I can try.
There are, uh, there's a sheet after this that shows the other municipalities and school districts that are doing it in Montgomery County.
Work or is this going to start making like a noise?
I have no idea. I have it unmuted. But what I wanted to say is our number is probably under a hundred. It, and I understand what Danielle is saying about the people not having it. Because I, I meet them, you know, they come in and they talk. They get into a bind. Where they get behind one year and then they can't get caught up. But, um, the issue is, they, they've been told numerous times. The bill for the township goes out March first. In the middle of June, they get another letter reminding them that the. This, the face value is ending and a ten percent penalty is happening. And then in the middle of November, they get another letter saying if you don't pay by December thirty-first, you will be delinquent. Um, I try to get, I try to call people. I try to remind them to help them as much as I can. Um, but I, I understand what they're saying about adding this extra five percent on. It will help the township. The amount of people is very small. And it's just a fee. And people are aware of it. Because when they tell me, they're like, I'll pay the county, but I, I'm going to be in lien for the school. And then the other big issue that happens is if somebody, say, buys a piece of property. And we have it over, I believe it's on Whistler. He gave the wrong address to the. Rec- Recorder of Deeds. So he's, he was probably gonna, you know, he got leaned last year. Because we didn't have the correct address. I think you can hear me now.
Thanks, Natalie.
So if you have any other questions, just let me know.
We actually can hear you great, so.
Oh.
You need to make another comment.
I think it's, I think now my computer's working.
Say, say something.
Can you hear me?
I just hung up on you, so you can try and talk and we'll see if we can hear you.
Alright, can you hear it?
No, it's not working.
Nope.
Okay, never mind. Alright, goodbye.
Natalie, call me back if, if you need to say anything else.
Okay.
Any, are there any additional questions from the board? Um, so I, I kinda, are there any additional questions from the public? I think this is something, and I, you know, agreed to have this on the agenda without having a, a prior conversation. Because I thought that there was going to be that offer for us to have payment plans and conversation with our residents. Prior to them entering into an agreement that would then increase the amount that they would pay beyond a hundred percent. Um, I would like to make a motion to table. I think I have a, a few more questions. I think I need to understand the number of individuals, the impact on the individuals. Um.
And find out if that five percent happens when they make a payment plan. I want to get all of that kind of.
I think I want to have all that detail and to have a better understanding of who's this going to impact, how many people this is going to impact. Um, and what historically have we encountered as far as number of incidents? Um, before I would put people on the vote, but I mean.
I'm okay with tabling it. I, I would, in addition to that, I'd also just like to know how much annually, if we can figure it out. That five percent is costing the township.
Property.
Right, but if it's like a, you know, in twenty twenty-four was this much, in twenty twenty-three it was this much, just to have an understanding of really. The cost and the, the impact of giving, giving that up.
Yeah, I, I also don't have enough information to vote on this tonight. Um, but I would like, um. The residents to be more aware of this, if that's possible, before we vote on it. So if there's any public discussion.
So right now, with the information that, um, the County Tax Claim Bureau gave us, there's twenty-four properties. Um, I'm not sure if this is just that it, that are leaned or that are delinquent in taxes, that are delinquent. So there's twenty-four that went to them that are delinquent. Um, they, of that, they're col- they've collected, this is going back to taxes owed from two thousand and twenty. A total of forty-eight thousand dollars, just over that, forty-eight thousand six. Some of these are commercial properties. Most of them are residential. Okay. Yeah, I think I would like to see a little bit more and hear a little bit more before we make this decision to make sure the public knows at large. That's just my. Opinion. I'd like to make a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you so much. Included in our board packet is a financial report for March of two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any?
Now you're skipping, now you're skipping.
I skipped again. Oh, I'm sorry. I already checked it off on my.
My agenda item.
I'm sorry. I check it, I check it off and because I started to talk about it, I already checked it all. Um, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it to Janine. But we're, we're considering waiving the requirements of section sixty-one. Six twelve oh one of the Township Code to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol at the two thousand and twenty-five Summer Concert Series and Fall Fest. Janine, do you want to take this one?
Um, well, we, we typically do this for Fall Fest. I mean, I, I guess we normally do it closer to, to the event. Um, but, but in terms of efficiency, it makes sense to do it all together. Um. We've sort of changed the, the concert series this year. We used to have the concerts every Wednesday in June and July. So there was usually, you know, seven or eight summer concerts. Um, the Parks and Rec, um, Board. Uh, made the recommendation that we reduce the number of concerts down to just once a month and then we can make them a little bit bigger. Um, and by bigger, I mean have a band that may be a little bit bigger and then a food truck. Um, some children's activities and potentially, um, an alcohol vendor. Um, like a beer truck or, or something. Well Crafted is right there. Um. I don't think anything's really been officially booked, but that's, that's the direction that the Parks Board was hoping to go. Um, so that folks during that hour could have a glass of wine and listen to the music. Um, so that's, that's why we have this on the agenda. I want to just make sure the other supervisors were aware and, and if the public had any comment.
Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Oh, Kathy. Is she doing a thumbs up? No, she's.
Is, are there any limitations?
You have a comment, Kathy, go ahead.
Type of alcohol?
You gotta come off mute.
It must be us.
Yeah.
Is our volume down or?
Uh, no, it's, um, I think.
Just beer and wine.
Can you hear us?
Well, there's that. Um, Widows Peak has come to Fall Fest before.
Might be easier to write it in the chat.
But I think it would just be one vendor.
Oh, were you just clapping? Maybe she was just clapping.
I was just.
I was just clapping. I think that's a great idea.
Clapping, Kathy?
We haven't had any problem with.
Clapping.
We can't hear you either.
I didn't think so. Good.
Okay.
And we thought we could try it this year, you know, the first concert and. Um, unless, you know, the chief has an objection, but.
Oh, she was clapping. Okay. She was just clapping. But we couldn't hear anybody.
Tessie was just asking if there were, you know, if there would be multiple vendors. And I, I think at the moment it would just be one and it may only be at one or two of the concerts. We're just, you know, walking before we run, um, but wanted to kind of try and gather. You know, more folks to come out and, and sort of boost attendance and.
Okay, this is your motion to make, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, I move to waive the requirements of the township code. To permit the sale and consumption of alcohol during the twenty twenty-five Lower Gwinnett Township Summer Concert Series and Fall Fest. Did I do it? I moved. I made a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh shit, Carrie's.
Give me a go.
Uh, next up is the financial report from March two thousand and twenty-five, included in our board packet. Are there any questions or concerns? Good to see that our, our revenue has increased or it's higher than what we budgeted. Yeah, through March.
Is that just a timing issue?
Revenue you're speaking of. So we did get our liquid fuels money in, which is about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So, um, that is in there and of course that's for the year. And we don't really spend that till closer to, uh, like the end of the summer, fall, right? That's, yeah.
That's why I look higher. Gotcha.
But everything else seems to be like right where it's supposed to be. Because we're down through a quarter and it's pretty slow the first quarter with most things. Cause real estate bills sort of just went out and a lot of our projects haven't started because summer hasn't picked up.
Expenses are tracking, they're up to budget.
Yeah, they're fine. So far, yep.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or? Concerns or comments from the board? Thank you so much. Greatly appreciated. We have an invoice report from March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Has everyone had a chance to review it? Are there any questions?
No questions.
Any questions from the public? Seeing that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice report for March twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Um, we have included in our board packet a township engineering report for April of two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you so much to our engineer. Are there any questions or concerns for our engineer? Seeing none, thank you again, sir. Um, included in our board packet is a traffic engineering report for April two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any questions for traffic engineer?
I just have one. Um, Chad, do we know when? Um, and it may be in here, and I missed it, but when the like Penland Pike and Twellyn, um, light. Will actually occur?
We're, we're a little ways off. We're just getting, getting started with design right now. So it'll take us at least a year to get through permitting. Um, it's a county road, so we have to get a, a permit from Montgomery County. And then we also have to get a permit from PennDOT for the modifications to the traffic signal. So like I said, it'll take us a year to get through permitting. Then once we bid it out, um, you're probably looking at all told another year on top of that, so.
And then it's going to take about a year probably to complete.
The installation would be rather quick.
Okay.
Um, you know, maybe over a two to three month span. The mast arms that are involved with the project. Um, the lead times on those keep getting longer and longer. And right now, it can take, um, up to five months, once they're ordered. Um, for the new signal poles and mast arms to commence. So that, that adds time to the project as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I just have one question about that little bridge on the Gypsy Hill near your house.
Oh, yeah, the one lane one.
We're waiting for, we're waiting for PennDOT to come back to us and see if they were going to choose to address it. And they hadn't thus far.
We, in their, in their last update of their capital program, they did not include the bridge. Um, they'll go through another update, um, next year. So we'll work with staff to make sure. Um, that we're in the county and PennDOT's ear to hopefully get it on PennDOT's capital program.
So the full year, is it like a January thing that they're, how did, how, like, when do we think that we need even?
Um, I can get exact dates on that, um, but the next update will be adopted next year. So they'll reach, they're reaching out a few months ahead of that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional questions? Um, next we have our minutes from our April eighth meeting. Um, has everyone had a chance to review and over the minutes? Are there any questions, concerns or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Supervisor liaison reports are included in our board packet, staff updates? Staff updates? No staff updates. Supervisor comments, uh, Tessie?
Um, just a, a couple of things. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the EAC and the staff. For putting together the, uh, presentation on single-use plastic. And whether or not the township would like to regulate that. So I, I think there was a pretty good turnout and I'm very pleased. And, um, I just wanted to thank all the individuals involved, uh, with putting that together. Uh, and the second thing is, um, Earth Day. So, um, I'm happy that our township is a, uh, a, a tree community as well as a bird community. And I hope we just keep building on this going forward. I'm, I'm very interested. I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, our, uh, upcoming presentation of a forest, um, management. As well as the trail management going into place. So that's all. Thank you.
Janine? No comments? Mimi?
Uh, just to, uh, announce, I guess, on April twenty-sixth, uh, from ten AM to five PM. Is the International Spring Festival at North Penn High School. And, uh, from ten AM to five PM, there's just a lot of different cultural events, foods. It's a huge, huge, uh, event, which, I mean, I think a thousand or more people will attend. So if you have nothing to do, you really should go and check it out. It's at, uh, North Penn High School.
Thanks, Jimmy. Dorsky?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Um. I just want to extend a sincere appreciation to our EAC and the, and the efforts that they've done over the past few weeks. Related to our, um, the evaluation of single use and sustainability, but also just in general, as we think back to Earth Day. Um, the efforts that they've, that they've embarked upon make a real difference in helping Lower Gwinnett become a more sustainable. And environmentally conscious place to live. But as we, um, I guess ponder Earth Day and our continued commitment. I wanted to just, and, and exploring some of the, the initiatives that Montgomery County has, has taken on as it relates to sustainability. Reducing their carbon footprint, environmental and education, um, and stormwater mitigation. I wanted to know if staff could take an opportunity, um, to reach out to Montgomery County on behalf of Lower Gwinnett. And see if any of those initiatives could be something that we could fold in to what we are doing currently. Or be a part of what we're doing currently with the understanding that we became a ready one hundred, um, municipality in two thousand and twenty-two. I know that Sierra Club has sunsetted that program. But I think that with, with the county's leadership, they've taken meaningful steps. Um, and it gives us an opportunity to either align with them and, and to, um, be a part of some of their environmental stewardship. And, and look at new ways and strategies that we can incorporate new best practices in the municipality. So it's just an ask of staff to go out and then see what's out there, see what they've done, maybe come back to us as a board. And, and see if that's something that we need to consider moving forward as we reflect on this Earth Day. But again, just wanted to thank the EAC for all they have done, our staff, um, and everyone in the community who helps work towards a more environmentally friendly place. And wishing everybody a happy Earth Day. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Meeting is adjourned. I have to get to Trader Joe's.